Good afternoon. It is Tuesday, May 16th. It is 4:30. We have a quorum, and I am calling this meeting to order. We are very lucky today. We have Clayton Cannon because he was going to have his older brother, but apparently football in Bastrop is extremely important. And so I believe it's practice or a game or something. But CJ wasn't able to join him. But Clayton is brave, and he's going to be awesome. And he is the grandson of our council member-elect Cynthia Sanders-Meyers. And we have a nice showing of the Sanders family with us today in chambers. And Clayton is a kindergartner at Emil. And either Clayton's going to come up by himself, or Clayton's going to come up with his mom, Kristy, whatever you guys want to do. But if you'll please step forward, ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise, we'll say the pledge to both flags. Come on, Clayton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Clayton deserves a round of applause. And of course, we're going to get your picture, too. Grandma, why don't you come up with him? Great job, great job. If you will please remain standing. We are honored to have Chaplain Bob Long with us, and he'll be giving our invocation today.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Lord. We enter your presence with thanksgiving, Lord, for all the things you've done for us individually, but for our community, we pray today. We thank you for the rains. Bastrop always receives rain, and we're grateful that we didn't have any severe weather with it. Now, we're here on a special occasion, Lord, to have new council members sworn in. So we pray for this ceremony. We pray for the new council members. We pray for those swearing them in. And we thank you for the city of Bastrop, a place that we are allowed to work and play and pray. And so we're grateful to be in Bastrop, Texas, today. And we thank you for the beautiful sunshine and what you're going to do in this ceremony, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Pastor Long. All right, Council, we are moving on to Item 4A. Consider action to approve... Actually, let me do something first because it'll help us later. We're going to go to citizen comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, Mayor.
See, we are done with citizen comments. Now, we're going to go to 4A. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2023-77 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to canvass May 6, 2023, election for mayor, Place 2 and Place 3 of the Bastrop City Council and establishing an effective date. Those of you who follow on the packets are going to say, "But they didn't put the numbers in the packet." So let me explain a couple of things. Council, you have a new resolution with the numbers at the dais. The way this works, we were all looking at the website and checking our phones. Those are unofficial results. And so they do a second counting and do all kinds of things to follow the law. And Ann received a copy of the numbers after the packet was posted. So that's why the resolution was posted the way that it was. So I have new numbers, but I also see the attorney's kicked on his light. Do you have something you want to say? Okay, all right. When the attorney puts on his light, I always want to double-check. All right, so Council, you will see that what Resolution 2023-77 is going to say is that the results will be, and when we have our... The act of me reading them is how we canvas them. And after we vote on them, then they will become the official results. For the seat of mayor, Deborah Jones received 377 votes. Lyle Nelson received 412 votes. Doc Jackson received 429 votes. And Elizabeth Northcutt received 102 votes. For City Council member Place 3, Kevin Plunkett received 808 votes. And Carrie C. Kaler received 454 votes. In City Council member Place 2, Cynthia Sanders-Meyers received 698 votes. Christine Long received 199 votes. And Gary Moss received 387 votes. The... And this resolution is going to point out that in the mayor's race, that the two top-receiving votes, Lyle Nelson with 412 and Doc Jackson with 429, neither candidate received the majority. And the way this works, it's not 51 percent. It's 50 percent plus one vote. And that's different, and that's math. And if you don't agree, we'll work some math later, and we'll go over that. But it's 50 percent plus one vote. Because there wasn't a decision in the mayor's race, the next item that we're going to do is call that runoff election. But in both Place 3 and in Place 2, Kevin Plunkett and Cynthia Sanders-Meyers both received the majority of being 50 percent plus one vote. So they are eligible to be sworn in. Now that we've gone over the details in Resolution 2023-77 that were not included in the public packet, I am happy to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Kirkland.
And a second.
And a second from Councilmember Crouch. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes with a 4-0 vote. We're now going to the top of Page 2. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R 2023-76 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, calling for a runoff election for the mayor of Bastrop City Council for a term of three years, designating the date of said election, designating polling places, designating early voting hours and places, directing, posting, and publication of notices for said election and providing for an effective date. Council, you'll recall that when we did the contract with the county, we made allowances and we budgeted for a runoff election, which makes it much easier that you've already picked the dates. We already know what it's going to cost. But we need to officially call the runoff election, and that's what Resolution 2023-76 does. Does anybody have any questions? I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Plunkett and a second from Councilmember Lee. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouch?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes 4-0. So we will now move on to the most exciting part, the oath of office. And Item 5A, incumbent Councilmember Kevin Plunkett for Place 3. And I will turn things over to the Honorable Judge Dugan. Councilmember Plunkett, you might want to join your wife and your Bible in front of the dais.
Let's see if this works. If y'all can hear me. I'm just glad I don't have to hold up that Bible. That's a big Bible. It's one of those Bibles you need to use two hands on. All right, Councilmember Plunkett, if you will raise your right hand. Well, I tell you what. Let's do this way. If you'll stand right there, put your left hand in that way. It's... No, it's a photo. Nobody needs me in the picture. Y'all need to be in the picture. If you'll repeat after me. I, Kevin Plunkett...
I, Kevin Plunkett.
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully execute...
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office...
The duties of the office.
...of City Council...
Of City Council.
...Place 3...
Place 3.
...of the city of Bastrop...
Of the city of Bastrop.
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
...and will to the best...
And will to the best.
...of my ability...
Of my ability.
...preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and of this state...
Of this state.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Get out of the way. Now the paperwork.
Welcome back, Councilmember Plunkett.
It was a long absence.
It was a long absence. Glad to have you for three years. Council, is there any words anybody wants to say to welcome Councilmember Plunkett? Councilmember Crouch?
Congratulations on your reelection and glad to have you on Council for three years of full-time this time. And just congratulations.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So there's a joke between us because we had a special election. And the following year, this year, he had to run again. And I said, "I bet you would have wished you would have waited to run through that special election because he had to go through all of it all over again." But congratulations. I'm glad you're still up here. You're very well respected in the community, and I'm glad to be sitting next to you.
Another few minutes.
Councilmember Kirkland, where are you?
Congratulations, Kevin.
I have very much enjoyed working with you for the last year. I'm glad that we're going to get another month together. I want to give special thanks to Angela and to the family because I know all too well, and I will say, since I'm at six years tonight, better than the other people that are sitting up here, the toll that it takes on the family and the amount of time that it takes. And you have a few other things on your plate. So I really appreciate your willingness to serve and your dedication to the community. So best of luck to you for your next three years. Would you like to share anything?
Not really. I'm not that big into speeches. But there's, you know, thanks to all my supporters and obviously to my family. You know, everybody at work who covers for me when I'm gone. It's a... It is difficult at times, but it's very, very worth it. And again, thank you.
So let's give Councilmember Plunkett a round of applause. All right, moving on to Item 5B, the incoming Councilmember Cynthia Sanders-Meyers. Now, he showed you exactly how to do it, Cynthia. So come on up, and I'll turn things back over to Judge Dugan.
Yeah, that was the... Yeah, you have to deal with perfection now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. All right, why don't you... If you stand on that side, and if you want to stand behind her, because if I'm blocking my... Everybody wants to see me. They want to see you. You're raising your right hand. All right. Take a deep breath.
All right.
I, Cynthia Sanders-Meyers...
I, Cynthia Sanders-Meyers...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully...
...execute the duties...
Execute the duties.
...of the office...
Of the office.
...of City Council Place 2...
Of City Council Place 2.
...of the city of Bastrop...
Of the city of Bastrop.
...of the state of Texas...
Of the state of Texas.
...and will to the best...
And will to the best.
...of my ability...
Of my ability.
...preserve, protect, and defend...
Preserve, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and laws...
The Constitution and laws.
...of the United States...
Of the United States.
...and of this state...
And of this state.
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Councilmember Plunkett. Now get to work.
He's serious. You've got paperwork to sign.
Sign right there. Sign right there. Yes, ma'am. I understand. And then right here also.
Oh, yeah, she's got a... Do what? No, she sits right here now. Ms. Meyers, you're now a City Councilperson. You get to... You need to sit up here.
Madam Mayor, we weren't kidding. Get to work.
I am. I don't know what she thought was going on, but... All right, Council, any words of welcome for our new Councilmember? Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I definitely want to welcome Cynthia to the dais. Well, she's not unfamiliar with it because she was on Planning and Zoning. But I'm so happy to see you up here during my stay up here as well. Cynthia and I and her family go way, way back to when I was born, literally. And I really love her family. I love Cynthia and her commitment to this community and what she brings to the community. And I'm very excited to have you up here and be able to serve with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, you know, I haven't known you long, but I've known your brother for quite a while.
Don't judge her by her...
Yes. I've tried not to. I've tried. You know about apples and trees and all that stuff there, right? But no, I very much look forward to working with you and just can't wait to get going.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Councilmember Crouch?
Yes, congratulations and well, well-worked and hard work effort. And I'm looking forward to working with you.
Me, too. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Kirkland?
Yes, so this is awesome. It's like the peaceful transfer of power that we get in democracy, right? I mean, it's just amazing. And so I want to congratulate you on a hard-fought race. And I look forward to working with you and accomplishing everything that we need to do to make Bastrop, you know, amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I'm so glad that I get an opportunity to serve with you on Council. And I know that your family has a long tradition of loving this community and giving back to this community. And Johnny, the only reason I teased you is because I know you can take it and dish it out. So I know we're solid. Your entire family has been involved with the Schrader family for a very long time. I'm glad that I'm able to call you guys friends. And I think that the work that you did on planning and zoning was wonderful. And you have always been an independent person that makes your own decisions. And I think that Bastrop's extremely blessed to have you as a Councilmember. So welcome aboard. Is there anything you'd like to share?
I just want to thank everyone for your kind words tonight on Council, but also everyone sitting out here and watching, especially my family, my immediate family. But I feel like the entire city of Bastrop is my family. So I really look forward to serving all of you. I love Bastrop and just plan on doing the best work I can for you. So thank you for electing me.
I'm glad you're willing to acknowledge the work because you need to turn to Page 2, and we're on Item 6A. And the next thing that we're going to do is elect a mayor pro tem. And I want to give just a little bit of information and talk about the function and the process. Our charter says that at the election immediately following the general election, that a mayor pro tem will be elected. Councilmember Kirkland brought up the peaceful transition of power. One of the reasons that you have mayor pro tem's is so there's a continuation of power. I know that six years ago, we had... It wasn't the mayor's race that went to a runoff, but it was one of the councilperson's races that went to a runoff. And there was a question of, well, can we wait until the new council member's seated? And the answer was no, because the charter doesn't allow you to do that. And the reason the charter doesn't allow you to do that is because I could get run over by a truck, hoping not, but that could happen. And so it sets up a peaceful transition of power. It's not unlike the fact... And I always think that this is fun. And many of you are very much aware of this. But in the Senate, the president of the Senate is the lieutenant governor. And when the lieutenant governor's not around, there is the Senate pro tem. Kirk Watson served that position recently. And there is a longstanding tradition that both the governor and the lieutenant governor leave the state of Texas for a 24-hour period so that they... The Senate pro tem gets to be governor for a day. And he usually hosts a party at the governor's mansion. And, you know, I'm sure they all act very well and leave things like they found it. But he gets to be governor for the day. So the mayor pro tem, it's not like once... If the mayor gets sick, if the mayor's out of town, it's not like, oh, okay, the mayor pro tem took over, so they're mayor from then on. The only time that the mayor pro tem takes over is if the mayor is sick or unable to take care of their duties. Tonight is six years since I was sworn in. There, I've missed one council meeting. So... But sometimes people get sick. Sometimes people go on vacations. And so that's how we take care of the transition of power. The other thing that's extremely important to note is you see that we have five council members and a mayor. The mayor does not vote. The mayor does not choose the mayor pro tem. And you lovely people in the audience are not eligible to be the mayor pro tem. The mayor pro tem comes from the five people that are seated on council, and the five of them get to decide who's the mayor pro tem is going to be. Because of that and because of the charter, that's why we're not waiting for the mayor's race because the mayor doesn't choose the mayor pro tem. The five council people choose the mayor pro tem. The other thing that you'll notice about our item tonight is that there's not a resolution. You're used to having resolutions, making motion, making a second, and passing a resolution. We're not passing a resolution, we're electing. So the way that this works is I will take nominations. And hopefully, they don't all five nominate themselves and all vote for themselves because it could be kind of a long night. But because it's only a nomination, you can nominate yourself. You can nominate someone else. You do not need a second. It's just your name's in the bucket to be voted on. After everybody's nominated whoever they want, we're going to... We can kind of do the raise hands, but it's going to be easier if the city secretary just calls the council members and they say who they're going to vote. Sometimes we only have one nomination. That makes it easier. Sometimes there's a couple... It doesn't matter. The five of them get to decide how they're going to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that that was all clear because sometimes there... People have... Don't let facts get in the way of a good story. So just wanted to share some facts. So with that, I see Councilmember Lee's light is on. And then Councilmember Crouch. Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm going to try to get through this. I wrote it out so that I could get through it. But I'd like to start the nominations and advocate for Councilmember Plunkett to be chosen as mayor pro tem for the city of Bastrop. Since the announcement of Jussie LaRosa's leaving Council, there have been lots of discussions in the community, as I'm sure you guys have all probably heard, as to who would be best for mayor pro tem and suggestions that I self-nominate myself for mayor pro tem and ask if I wanted the role. And in assessing who I thought would be good in that seat, Councilmember Plunkett came to mind. So I just wanted to kind of talk about why I thought he would be good. I think that anyone sitting or holding the title of mayor or mayor pro tem should be active and engaged in the community and involved in some form of municipal government through committees and boards and such. And many residents in the community that spoke with me about today, what's going to happen here in a moment, his name was brought up because of what he's done in the community and the energy and effort that he's given to Bastrop to make Bastrop greater. As the mayor explained, the title of mayor pro tem has no authority or power over council, and my research requires no additional time and effort and energy than what we already contribute as council members. However, I feel that the person holding that title, just like the mayor, are the face of Bastrop. And someone in that seat wants to be in that seat because they, one, have a proven history of service to the community, and they're able to genuinely connect with the diverse community we serve. And I feel Councilmember Plunkett has been able to do that. Again, Councilmember Plunkett and I ran in opposition during my second attempt at gaining a seat on Council. But before we even hit the campaign trail, he reached out to me because he wanted to meet, and he wanted to talk to get to know me. He didn't want to know what my position was. He didn't want to know what my stance was on things. He just wanted to get to know me as a person and what it was like growing up in Bastrop. And we talked a lot about our families. And from that, from that initial meeting I had with him, I could feel how sincere he was in his connection with people and connecting with people. So I think that that showed a lot about his character. And I've witnessed him in the community and on this dais making decisions with the willingness to hear the people that come before us and the presentations that we receive to make the best decision based on points of views of other people, not just himself. The background that I know of him is when he and his family moved to Bastrop. They immediately invested in the community, and they now have three successful businesses downtown. His commitment to the success of small business owners in all of downtown and the efforts to maintain historical Bastrop is admirable. I believe his children graduated from our public school system. His wife, her Louisiana Southern charm just wins over every person she comes in contact with in our community. And to add to that, he served on BEDC as vice chair, on the chamber board as chair, visit Bastrop. And of course, he serves as a distinguished council member. Add to that, he has run two successful campaigns with opponents and won, which shows that he has overwhelming support, trust, and respect from the community. So I've kind of heard through the grapevine. I hadn't talked to him, but I heard through the grapevine that he didn't really want to be nominated. But I hope that he will reconsider if that is his stance and accept this nomination and that my fellow council members will join in support. And any one of us sitting here can host a meeting. It's not difficult to do. However, I feel like Councilmember Plunkett has been able... Been a staple in our community even longer than me, and I was born here, and has played an active role in working towards Bastrop being better longer than anyone on the dais. And I don't think any of us can disagree that he's deserving of the role. And I think the role should be given to someone who has done the work and has a proven servant's heart for this community. So with that, I nominate Councilmember Kevin Plunkett.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Crouch?
I'd like to... And I guess I'm the senior person up here, not just because I'm the oldest one up here, but I've been on council for two years. And that doesn't seem like it would be a senior person, but it is. And so as that person, I'd like to nominate Councilmember Kirkland for almost identical reasons as Cheryl just shared. And also the fact that Councilmember Kirkland is a bulldog with issues and is an engineer by trade and thinks with an engineering brain[1677.58] with every item that he, that he gets, uh, in front of him. So I think he's, uh, very thorough and would do an excellent job as, uh, Mayor Pro Tem.
Councilmember Plunkett?
Well, wow, first of all, what can I say? Cheryl, thank you so much for the kind words. I agree with some of it, I'm sure. But, um, there's one person up here on the dais who works harder than anybody else to understand the issues in depth and from as many different viewpoints as, as he can figure. And, um, and I think that's Councilmember Kirkland and I would put his name in nomination as well.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing no other lights, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll, the two nominations to consider are Councilmember Plunkett and Councilmember Kirkland.
Councilmember Lee?
You're voting, there's two people, you're gonna say who you're voting for.
Kevin?
Councilmember Plunkett?
Councilmember Kirkland.
Councilmember Meyer?
Councilmember Kirkland?
Councilmember Crouch?
Councilmember Kirkland?
Councilmember Kirkland?
Councilmember Kirkland?
Thank you, Council, for voting and congratulations, Councilmember Kirkland, you're our Mayor Pro Tem. And that is. Per the charter, that's a one-year term, that's, that's how it works. So next May, you know, we get to go through it all again. All right, we have taken care of item number seven, which is the citizen comments. And, um, we're going to change the agenda because we're gonna adjourn and then go to the reception because I don't wanna do the reception and come back in to adjourn. So, um, there is still going to be a reception, but we are going to officially adjourn the meeting. Councilmember Meyer, would you like to adjourn your very first meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Council, uh, from Mayor Pro Tem Kirkland. It is 5 o'clock and we are adjourned. Please join us for the reception, thank you very much.